I do call this meeting to order, it is six o'clock. We will start as always with the Youth of the Month award. We have a school teacher, Mark Polabinski, who's also a former city council member. And the Student of the Month is Hannah Rosson. They have one special request of you two, and they'll ask you as they're going through this, council members. You're gonna have to do some work.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This has been a wonderful program for students in Wopaka High School to get some recognition in front of our city council members here. And tonight, we have Hannah Rosson. And she's the daughter of Amy and Richard Rosson. I first got to meet Hannah when she was a freshman, she came out for soccer originally at Wopaka High School. And I got to North U.S. Soccer, but probably in a bigger role was through yearbook. And I'm the yearbook advisor at Wopaka High School, and she's an integral part of our staff. I think Hannah embodies everything that we look at a student at Wopaka High School to be. We have our new PBIS rollout this year where we're emphasizing students to be responsible, respectful, be prepared, and be safe. And Hannah is definitely a person who exemplifies all those traits of a Wopaka High School student. On the yearbook staff, she has been nothing but a go-getter from day one. She has been on the staff for three years now, and this is gonna be our third book that we put together. And by the way, our yearbook is all done, probably if you were on your book staff when you were in high school, it's all done on the computers now. Yeah, everything is electronic. We submit our pages online, we build the pages online, we do our advertising online, students order online, and it's a pretty high-tech, new way to do yearbooks, and they come out really beautiful. So, when I see Hannah in my classroom every day, she comes in for study hall and for yearbook. She is a very hard-working student. And when I talked to Steve Hackett about selecting a student, Hannah reminds me a lot about myself when I was in high school. I struggled a lot at certain subjects. One was mathematics. And even though we're connected by yearbook, Hannah brings in her math problems and relentlessly does math corrections, right? And I have to jog my memory because even though I struggled in high school, I had to work at it just like Hannah, and I ended up being a mathematics major from college. And it's my forte today, but even though I teach computer science, I still love mathematics. And I like it when kids come and ask me, and I have to jog my memory and think, "How did we do the Pythagorean theorem? How did we do the quadratic theorem?" I like doing it. And she works very, very hard to accomplish that. Her personality is wonderful. She is the sweetest person. When I see kids having a bad day at school, Hannah will be the first one to try to cheer up their day. She never has a frown on her face. She comes to school every day with a smile. And if our whole school could be like Hannah, you know, Wopaka High School would be a better place, but she's definitely a model student for Wopaka High School. And let's see, Hannah say a few words?
Sure, if she wants to.
Does she lead the pledge? Do you do the pledge allegiance?
She could do that if she wants, after she says a few words that she wants to.
Okay, and I mean, I shouldn't talk so much, I don't want Hannah to say a few words.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Polo, for the award. And he's one of my favorite teachers, I'm definitely gonna miss him the most after I graduate. And we asked him if he was gonna miss us, and he said he would, even though there's a whole new group coming in, but just wanna say thank you.
Thanks. We also have... We have a certificate to give you, Hannah, which is a certificate of recognition for being the Student of the Month, December Student of the Month. You're welcome.
So, you know, and we haven't recognized this in yearbooks in the past, but we would like to, if you would, if the city council, we'd like to take a picture of the city council and Hannah for our yearbook this year. And we plan to publish in this year's book the names of the past students so we can continue this recognition in a formal manner. So, would you mind coming down for a picture?
Sure.
I think what we could do is we could set one up right here, right in front. Yeah, if we kinda walk around here, and I'll show over here. Thank you.
Cool.
Are you gonna hang around and run the meeting too, Mark?
Put it this way, yeah, not run it, it's all off the screen. I did it twice already, but we need to do that. Yeah. It's always very...
It's a kind of drive. It's just camera, like he's always... Congratulations. Oh, did you? Thanks a lot.
Okay. We got here. I'm gonna get, someone's gonna have to be in front. I'm gonna have everybody squeeze in, yeah, turn sideways, kinda move in, I'm cutting the guys off on the side. Pass the light in, just see what the lighting here says. Beautiful. Okay, on three, one, two, three. Thank you.
All right. You have to lead us inside.
Oh, that's right. Yes.
We'd ask that all of you rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, congratulations again, Hannah. Okay, we're gonna ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take a role for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. You have the consent agenda in your packet, it's actually on page one and two of your packet. Are there any items that, well, let's ask Sandy first of all, do you have any additions to the consent agenda?
I do, I do. Under letter D, meeting minutes, number two, minutes of a regular Parks and Recreation Board meeting on December 11th, 2014, were distributed. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Are there any items that council members would like to see moved from the consent agenda, where we act on those items all in one motion? And by moving them from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, they would have their own separate motion. Dave, Pete?
I would like, I don't know if it's proper, but I would like to ask questions on the library board minutes, and...
And that's what I was gonna ask.
Do you have to pull it out to do that, or when?
You can pull it out. Again, there is no action to be taken, but you certainly can pull it out so we can discuss it during the regular part of our meeting. Let's do that... Let's do that right before... What do you wanna do, under unfinished business? Let's do it, letter nine D, it would be. So, right before the issues and discussions, so we'll make that nine D.
Nine four.
Okay. All right. Four, nine four. Good. Okay, so we're moving one item off of the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the library meeting. And with that said, and the one addition, is there anything else that council would like to see?
Move to approve consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Fenske, that we approve the consent agenda with those two, one addition, one deletion. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Regular agenda, Sandy? Nothing?
I have nothing.
Okay. Nothing for the regular agenda except for what is printed in your packet? Anyone wanna make a motion? Like to ma... Oh, Henry, you asked, I'm sorry. You asked me if we could move the...
About the unfinished business items, I think there was some people traveling, a couple hours for this. There's some requests to move it up.
Okay.
The Bethany Home rezoning and then special use.
Are we okay with that, if we were to move that to the beginning?
Mayor, we do have a couple, or at least one representative from Milwaukee here this evening, so if we can accompany, you know, possibly moving it up, that would be greatly appreciated.
So, if we moved it up to the very first item under new business, are we okay with that?
Could you just flip-flop the unfinished with the finished?
We can. You guys all right with that? Doing the unfinished, all the unfinished business first? And then go back to, and doing the new business? Right? If we're okay with that? Somebody remind me when we get there.
That's why we have Sandy.
Exactly. We need a motion then?
I think so.
Motion by Hackett.
Second.
Second by Keeland, that we approve of the regular agenda with moving the unfinished business to the first item on the agenda after the department announcements and reports. And then the new business would be the last item, or eight, nine, or just flip-flopped. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a thank-you note from Joseph Carl Halfley, I'm sorry if I'm gonna say that's wrong, Halfley, that's Peg's father, that's informational. We also have a thank-you note from the family of James Flynn, which is Tina Dennis's father, and that's also informational purposes, in your packet. Next, we have the public input. If there's any items that, any item that a member of the audience would like to speak to the council on that is not on our agenda tonight, you have that opportunity at this time by stepping up to the podium, giving your name and address for the record. This would only be on items that are not on our agenda for tonight. Is there anybody? If not, we'll move on to department announcements and reports. And Kathy, you're first one on the list here.
Good evening. In your packet this month, for this meeting, I did do a little bit of changing on the treasures reports, if anybody had noticed. I did provide a different format for the check registers so that you can see checks that have been issued prior to the meeting and vouchers that are up for approval, that were up for approval tonight. I also provided a balance sheet and expenditure and revenue comparison to budget, and we'll be continuing to expand on reports to the council as I get caught up a little bit more. Also, just a reminder to everyone that the city does not collect the property tax bills, and that we are getting a lot of residents paying, coming in here with a check from their mortgage company made out to the city. And the county is the source where they need to take their bill payments to. And the county will accept checks made out to the city and the resident or the city if that's what they're getting from their mortgage companies. And they don't need to come to City Hall to get it signed over. So, I just wanted to make sure, 'cause we've gotten a lot of calls in the last week, and some in the mail, so... And then I've set up, the preliminary for the auditors will be Tuesday, January 13th, so we'll be starting to close the books and having some final, preliminary final numbers for the council, first one in February. That's all.
Awesome. Is that an accounting term, preliminary finals?
Preliminary finals, yeah.
Something like that, yeah, okay. All right, thanks, Kathy. Peg, library.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Well, we had a very successful Downton Abbey tea on Saturday with 64 women of all ages in attendance, and we enjoyed a lot of tasty treats. It was quite the deal. We won't be doing it again anytime too soon, but perhaps next year. Our strategic plan is in its final stages, and we hope to present the plan, maybe along with the annual report for this year. Our first Thursday film in January is actually on the second Thursday, because we're closed on the first Thursday, and you'll enjoy that at 1:30 on January 8th. Our seed library is scheduled to open in spring of 2015, and this is actually kind of a seed exchange. People would bring, would check out seed from our library, save seed, and then bring it back so that we can sustain the program. So, there'll be more details about that in 2015. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Peg. Any questions, comments? Peg? Okay, Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. My report is in your packet, and several of the items that are underneath there will be discussed this evening, so I'm not gonna go into those. But just wanted to kinda look at the year-end stuff here a little bit. I think I mentioned last month I finished my last course, or for my certification process for economic development, so I'll be looking to sit for the exam next June. But the last course I took, which was business retention expansion, there's a lot of information opportunities I felt I will be able to utilize here. So, as we work on our year-end reports, and I did my yearly review with Henry for the strategic plan, some of those items that, you know, were slated for 2015 will be starting in the first quarter, so we're looking forward to that, and doing some new innovative ideas, I think, with meeting with businesses and trying to be a little bit more transparent, but also help some of the businesses that are within the community trying to rent, lease, or sell some of their buildings. Couple other projects that we have going on right now. Unfortunately, I am losing one of my interns. He has accepted a job as executive director down in Monroe for their Main Street. So, Jordan will be finishing his internship here at the city at the end of this week. Nathan Woods, which is presently sitting behind me, will actually be continuing part of his internship going into 2015 on one of our projects that we're discussing later tonight. But definitely been appreciative for both of those individuals working with my department along with Henry and the city for the past year here. Main Street project is still moving along well. We are coming in on the closing stages here for the visioning committee. We're gonna have one meeting next month on January 19th to kinda have a little bit more detailed conceptual plans, and then we're gonna open it up to the public. And we started anticipating bringing through open house in February, March, and then through Plan Commission City Council for adoption in the first, the second quarter of 2015. And we are circling back on the downtown business forum. We held a meeting back in September, and because of some other issues with the visioning exercise and Eric losing one of his staff, I've had to take a little bit more of a bigger role in that project. So, we're gonna be circling back on that and having another meeting probably in the first quarter of 2015. So, some new information coming out, and I continue to look at the website, 'cause we'll be looking to update some more of that coming in early 2015.
Thanks, Brennan. Any questions, comments for Brennan? John Edelbeck, Public Works?
Okay, my report is also in your packet. Name of the game's been weather. We've been fighting some snow and ice, and rain and all that, but looks like the roads are finally clear after the ice that we had, that was laid down on the roads. We've had a, yesterday, or today, we had a main break on Ninth and Park that we repaired by the hospital. Last week, you might have saw, might have seen, the Main Street was closed, we had a water service leak repair at the Rosa. That is now our 19th service repair since I've been here in 18 years, so on Main Street, on the four blocks of Main Street, hint, hint. And we have another service leak on Olborn and Fulton that's on the property owner's side of the service box, so we dug that up today, and the plumber will be pursuing, proceeding to make that repair. With the weather cooperating, we are back collecting leaves again, and they will continue to do so as long as the equipment will allow it and the weather allows. So, we also have some vacation time that is being used at this time as well, so, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thanks, John. Comments, anybody?
I have a question I was asked. The trail or the path that goes out past the cemetery and out to the high school, who is supposed to plow that?
We have not maintained that. We have not plowed that previous winters. The trail beyond that is not plowed either.
Okay.
So, that's a decision that was made by the school district, the county, and the city. You know, even if we were to plow it, I can't guarantee they're gonna do their section either, so...
Okay.
Some people ski it and don't want it plowed, so we have not put forth the manpower or expenditures to maintain that in the past.
Okay, I just told them I'd ask.
Yeah, in the spring, we do get it cleaned off, you know, as soon as we can, 'cause there's debris on it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, John. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor. My monthly report is on page 18 of your packet. I just wanted to touch on a couple other things that are not included in that report. We are looking at implementing a check-in system at the rec center for Friday and Saturday nights for all of our users, mainly youth. We're looking at a couple different programs, have it narrowed down, looking at doing that in the beginning of the year. We do have, we have met with all of the townships, Dayton, Farmington, Town of Wopaka, to report on the strategic plan, and our meeting with Lance Penny from Lind on this Friday to just kinda go over that report with him, and hopefully open up a relationship with Lind, or at least start talking about it as far as youth programs go. Planning, we are planning for our Winter Recreation Fest. I did announce last meeting that it would be January 31st. We have moved it because of the availability of some firefighters, which we'll get into later this meeting, for possibly shooting off fireworks, but we have moved it to February 7th. That is also the Iola Winter Carnival. We've reached out to some of their board members and talked to them, and kind of, they didn't feel like it would conflict with anything, so we wanna make sure we're not taking away from other events in the immediate area. Josh and Sheldon are currently rebuilding, rehabbing the fishing pier that was, we had some money donated to us from the foundry, if you remember. The decking is going back on, almost completed. We're gonna start working on the railing and putting some benches up, as well as some new lighting there over the next week or so. Sled Hill is open and closed again. When it was open, we had a lot of compliments, a lot of use, especially on Fridays and Saturdays, as well as Sunday afternoons. Week has been a little slower, we're glad we have that maintenance pot, because we do have some things after seeing it being used that we would like to put in place for next year. Doggy Austin gym floor, we did meet with Basement Floors to go over that. We did get a recommendation from Basement, they're out of Appleton, that we are looking to follow that as a spec, and you'll be hearing from us on that floor in the near future, for future meetings. Fish sticks application has been submitted to the DNR. It's what you guys probably know as the Tree Drop Project that we recently did on Shadow Lake. We have had a number of residents on Mirror Lake say that they're interested, and we have actually eight locations that we have that out, that permit is good for eight years. And I'll let you know when I hear back from the DNR. And then I just wanna put a plug in for the senior center and the cookbooks that they're selling for the holiday fundraiser, they're 12 bucks apiece. If you're like me, you haven't gotten all your Christmas shopping done yet, so come to the rec center, and we'll get you, we'll get you a cookbook. And that's all.
Okay, thanks, Aaron. Any questions?
Actually, I do have one more thing, sorry, Mayor. I did wanna just give a quick update on the YMCA. I'm sure some of you have heard that right now the YMCA is kind of in a holding pattern, as far as we know. We don't know a lot of details, but the grand opening was supposed to be December 15th, and that has not happened. And really, we're not sure if they're gonna come, if they're not gonna come, if it's gonna be a month before they get it going, if it's gonna be a year, two years, three years. We're kinda waiting to hear. So, I don't know any details, but just thought I'd mention that.
Thanks, Aaron. Keep us informed, please. Okay, Chief Golk?
Thanks, Mayor. My report to council is in the packet, just a couple highlights. At this month's meeting, we did another round of interviews. The first round didn't yield the candidates that we were looking for. We interviewed four candidates for the initial position, and also for information, we did release another officer during the, for failing to meet the minimum standards during their probationary period. So, we'll be looking at filling two vacancies based off this current list. We do have one in line that's scheduled to start in a few weeks, and once we get through with the medical testing, we can release that name. Hopefully, at the next meeting, I'll have both names available. On Tuesday, December 2nd, if you saw on the paper and media, they highlighted a program called Shop with a Cop. This is the first year that the countywide program initiated this. We had five officers contribute and donate their time, Mario Grisaffa, Nicole Hahn, Diana Flatoff, Nate Nelson, and Brent Krieger. They volunteered their time and went on behalf of the Wopaka Police Department and assisted 32 children with shopping for Christmas gifts. And that was all donated money, along with volunteered times of other officers throughout the county and family members. Also, locally, for the Wopaka Police Department, we've done a program called Adopt a Family, and for as long as I remember, Brian Hosezal has been in charge of that. And this year, we collected approximately $400. And what that does is we work with human services in the county, identify a family in need, and we go out and buy Christmas gifts for that family, and that's what that money is used for. The rest is informational.
Thanks, Chief. Any comments, questions? All right, Henry?
Thank you, Mayor. My report starts on page 41 of the packet. John, I don't know if you meant to pass over this or not, but the Chainaw Lake Sewer District, I think, is on track to pass the agreement that you guys approved at your last meeting. I think we're spending some time getting Kathy assimilated to our operations and things, so we've had a lot of contact with her over the past month. The County Economic Development Corporation, which I'm a member of, and Brennan as well, we're gonna be embarking on something similar, but not as extensive as the council went through on strategic planning for economic development. It's been a number and number of years since we sat down as a group to kinda map out some activities and things going forward. So, I'm looking forward to that process. They are planning a kind of a half-a-day retreat, I believe, to set some priorities. And then finally, we have pulled together a cross-department group to kinda look at our code enforcement process, to see if we could streamline it, make it better for all of us that are involved in it, and the public. We're gonna have probably one more meeting to finish it up, and as I mentioned in the packet, there might be some suggested changes to our code involving code enforcement, so that should be coming forward in the next month or so. So, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Henry. Any questions, comments for Henry? All right, let's move on then. We're going to go to unfinished business. And we start with the, there's actually two items that we're going to act on tonight, the rezoning of some Bethany Home property, and then also a special use permit, in that order. I'll have Brennan send it up for you.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we start on page 223, for everybody looking in the packet. And similar to how we've handled it at the Plan Commission, we do have two applications here, as the mayor discussed. Would like to have a general just overview of the project, because they are tied hand in hand. But at the time that a motion is made, we'll have to do two separate action items for the rezon, special use. First up is the rezone, and mainly with the rezone of the property, where a portion of the property is rezoned R1, which is a single family. It's the underlying district that we utilize for setback requirements, open space requirements, and, you know, how large and how tall buildings can be. When Bethany first proposed this project, they presented a building design that was 43 feet tall. And within the R1 district, you're only allowed a maximum height of 35 feet, so the first application on here is mainly specifically for...
We're going to go to unfinished business, and we start with the, there's actually two items that we're going to act on tonight. The rezoning of some Bethany Home property, and then also a special use permit, in that order. I'll have Brunet send it up for you.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we start on page two-twenty-three, for everybody looking in the packet. And similar to how we've handled it at the Plan Commission, we do have two applications here, as the mayor discussed. Would like to have a general just overview of the project, because they are tied hand in hand, but at the time that a motion is made, we'll have to do two separate action items for the rezon, special use. First up is the rezone, and mainly with the rezone of the property, where a portion of the property is rezoned R1, which is single-family. It's the underlying district that we utilize for setback requirements, open space requirements, and, you know, how large and how tall buildings can be. When Bethany first proposed this project, they presented a building design that was forty-three feet tall, and within the R1 district, you're only allowed a maximum height of thirty-five feet. So the first application on here is mainly specifically for the height of the proposed building that Bethany is looking to construct. There's two portions of the project, one of them being additional twenty units, their CBRF, or RCAC care, and then the other one is mainly their therapy area, which is a three-story building. So that is why the rezone is in place, or is being requested by Bethany Homes. The latter part of it, which is the special use permit, it really is for the use on the property, which is the operation of the, of Bethany Homes and the three entities that they have on there, between their CBRF there and the different care that they provide on the property. Their special use permit needed to be revised. They've had one or two previously on the site for their operations over the years, and we're just expanding that special use permit to accommodate the new construction that they're being, that is being proposed for the site. This application was reviewed by the Plan Commission back in November. We held a public hearing, which was heavily attended by residents and neighbors at that time, and at the November Plan Commission meeting, it was recommended that both applications be tabled, so that Bethany Homes could actually have another neighborhood meeting. They held one privately back in October, or September, October, before they actually made their application and presentation to the city for their project. So the November Plan Commission meeting, both applications were tabled, and the mayor and I attended a neighborhood meeting that, which was held by Bethany Homes and their consultants here early December, on a Wednesday night, which was attended by about twenty people. During that meeting, and there's a couple issues that have been brought up, one being the concern of the height of the building. Within the R1 district, you're allowed a maximum thirty-five, a maximum height of thirty-five feet for a structure. By going to the R3 multifamily zoning district, you're allowed a maximum forty-five feet tall. The proposed building, again, to the, to the top of the, the height of the building is forty-three feet, to the eve of the building is thirty-five, but as staff reviewed the project, along with the Plan Commission, we felt it was in the best interest to try to maintain the character of residential, especially being near a single-family, so we were requiring the hip roof to conceal a lot of the roof mechanicals and everything else that were being proposed for that project. A couple other concerns that, you know, I believe have been addressed throughout this process, have been some of the landscaping requirements, and some additional fencing that was being requested by a neighbor to the north. The applicant has gone, in my opinion, above and beyond what's required for the landscaping requirements on site. We have staff, along with John O'Beck and myself, have worked with them to really focus on some of their stormwater requirements. That was another concern that we heard from the neighbors, as it relates to, you know, any additional stormwater that may come off-site. That is all being handled on-site, between what DNR requirements are and the construction of, you know, additional bioswells and bioretention areas. We're very fortunate, and as I continue to hear from John a lot, our sandy soils are able to absorb a lot of water, so we use that to our advantage for filtration and stormwater requirements. Within your packet, you do see there were a couple petitions that were out there, for concerns. We have two of them in there, one for support and one, again, for concerns that were brought forward by the neighbors. At the December Plan Commission meeting, there was a recommendation by the Plan Commission to recommend approval to the city council for both agenda items that you have here in front of you this evening, under one condition, and there was a request by Mr. Alderman Keeland, who also served on the Plan Commission meeting. There are some existing resolutions out there that date back to nineteen eighty-one and nineteen eighty-seven, respectively, for Bethany when they did some previous improvements on their site. There was a reference to a vegetated buffer area between their home, or between their property and the single-family homes off of Shadow Lake Drive. There was a concern based upon the new proposed project, that that we were in violation of that resolution. I had a verbal discussion with Attorney Hart, and then followed up with the letter that's in, or a memo that is in within your packet, that Attorney Hart has reviewed the proposed project and does not feel that we're in violation of the previous resolutions. And there's also some other indications for some emergency access that is being required by staff and EMS. We are not in violation of that requirement by the resolution either. At this time, I guess I'll open it up for, if there are any questions regarding either one of the applications.
Do they have any questions they'd like to ask or comments? If not, as we talked about before, there are two action items that we need to take. The first one, obviously, is, is that we need to look at rezoning this property from an R1, single-family, to an R3 district, and that was the first item that City Plan Commission did recommend to council to approve. So we would need a motion.
I would so move.
Second.
A motion by Mayo, second by Fenske, that we approve of the rezoning of the Bethany Home property from R1 to R3. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call a roll.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the second item that concerns the Bethany Home expansion is the special use permit, and Brennan has explained that in depth. I do want council members, though, to make sure that you understand the recommendations that, that are on pages two-thirty-five and two-thirty-six of your packet. Does it go to two-thirty-seven, too? I'm not sure, but. These are all stipulations that must be met before the special use permit would be allowed, and also before a building permit could actually be pulled.
Correct. There is one item in there that, you know, we'll point out, and currently, right now, back to nineteen eighty-seven, Bethany Homes does pay a pilot payment in lieu of tax fee for the Shadow Woods duplex development. As part of the recommendation, we are looking to negotiate, and we're in those discussions right now, a new pilot fee for the expansion on Bethany Homes for their additional CBRF units, along with their therapy units. That agreement is, I would say, tentatively in place, or at least for consideration to be brought to council. There's some other items that I've spoken with Henry about that I think we need to put together before it actually does come forward to the council for consideration, but as part of this approval process, until that pilot agreement is actually approved by city council, the applicant cannot receive a building permit. So that is one of the recommendations. Then, again, all the other ones that are on here are, you know, site plan requirements for, you know, what type of building materials, type of lighting that's allowed on the site, and everything else. Now, again, was approved by, recommended for approval by the Plan Commission.
Any other questions on that? I'd like to make a motion.
I'd more for approval.
Second.
A motion by Fenske, second by Puchatsky, that we approve of the rezoning, or, I'm sorry, of the special use permit for Bethany Home incorporated with the stipulations that you see on pages two-thirty-five, two-thirty-six, and two-thirty-seven. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
And Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thanks. A long workout for the city, the planning, the city council, and staff especially, I'm sure for you too, Paul, and for Bethany, but good luck to you. I hope everything works out. Let's move on, then, to ordinance number zero-eight-one-four. This is a ordinance repealing a portion and amending a portion of the municipal code for the city of Wapaka. It's section twelve-twenty-five, twelve-point-two-five, for tattoo establishments. John Hart, you want to just?
It was last council meeting on December second. There was considerable discussion about this, and it was decided that it was necessary to amend the ordinance if we were going to consent to the requests of Mr. Verghouwen concerning the tattoo parlor. One of his requests had to do with eliminating the need to have signage concerning the, a warning concerning hepatitis B, and the other was that the law required a twenty-four-hour waiting period between the time a person signed a consent form to have the tattoo and to have the work done. What this does, basically, is it repeals the section that requires a signage, and it just amends the other section, which basically has to do with signing a consent and what is required at that time, but it does eliminate the twenty-four-hour waiting period. One other observation, there was some sense of urgency in this. There was quite a bit of discussion last time, though there was no formal ordinance in place, but there was some discussion about waiving a first reading, so that it could be acted on this evening.
Okay, so the way, if you are okay with that, and this is totally up to the council, obviously, but the first thing that we would need to do, if you're okay with waiving it, is make a motion to waive the first reading, and then we would vote on that, and then we would vote on the ordinance amendment after that.
I move that we waive the first reading of this ordinance.
We have, that's good, perfect. We have a motion by Mayo, second by Peterson, that we waive the first reading of ordinance number zero-eight-one-four. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. So next, then, would be ordinance number zero-eight-one-four. Motion? Somebody?
Can we move for approval?
Second.
A motion by Fenske, second by Hagan, that we approve of ordinance number zero-eight-one-four. This is an ordinance repealing a portion and amending a portion of municipal code of the city of Wapaka, section twelve-point-two-five, tattoo establishments. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call a roll.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
And Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Good luck. I see they're in the audience here. All right, let's move on, then, to, we're going back to new business here.
We have the library board minutes.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry. Nine-four, okay, so, library board minutes are on, tell me, what page? Somebody have that available real quick?
The one-forty-eight.
Okay, so we had two people that had asked that the board minutes be moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, so, Dave, you were the first one to ask, you have some questions, comments, or whatever?
I guess those two questions I had, at two different parts, and on the motions they made, on page one-twenty-nine. Has to do with salary. Question they need to hang on one. Approve the wage increase to eight-point-six-five per hour for part-time employees. Understand that. The second one is, where the question is, the wage increase of ten-ninety. Is that a wage, as it states, of ten-ninety, or a wage to ten-ninety?
A wage to ten-ninety per hour.
That's my question.
Yeah.
That's one question.
Okay, so, you're under...
Just wording here, a little careful, because...
You just wanted to make sure that you understood what it meant, right?
What it means if it says, oh, ten-ninety, that means you add it on.
Oh, okay.
I'm doing ten-ninety, there's a little difference.
Okay. All right.
Haven't been approved by the library board yet, so they go in on...
Okay, and you had another question?
Below the next approval, wage increase of three percent instead of two-point-five for all library employees, I wondered if that was going to affect, whatever, the tax fee, or whatever, no, which came first, or can they do that, or I guess that's my question.
Well, I mean, the short answer is yes, they can do it, and Peg, do you want to explain how you are...
Well, the library board has the authority to set the wage for library employees. When they approved the three percent raise in October, they felt that was a fair increase for library employees that have been compensated at a less-than-equitable level for many, compared to many city employees. So they did approve a point-five percent greater increase than the rest of the city employees. The plan is to look at line items mid-year, see where we are in our budget for, for other line items, move that needed additional funds to personnel, and to ask our library foundation and our library friends to help with the materials that we would be moving from those line items.
Mayor.
Well, let me, Dave, are you finished?
I think that answers it. What if Park and Rec or police want to do the same thing?
The only one that has their own, that's allowed to do that, is the library board, and they are given that by state statutes.
They don't have the number, but they can set the compensation by state law.
Yeah, I mean, they, what they did, they legally can do. They, they, the city council sets their budget amount, their dollar budget amount, and then they can decide how they are going to use that money within their library budget. There are some things that council controls over that, but pay is not one of those. That's different than the optional powers that the police and fire commission have, although they have many of their own rights, too, that we don't control, but pay is not one of those for the police and fire commission. So the only one that could really do this is the library board. Nobody else. Public Works couldn't do this. Parks and Rec couldn't do this. Henry's office couldn't do this either.
So what you're saying is, we give them an amount of money and they can do whatever they please?
Yes. Yes.
Please remind us that in the...
I don't think I'm gonna forget, Steve.
Thank you.
That's for sure. Anybody else have any comments on that? Jillian did, she doesn't have a comment, because she didn't say, but she is a member of the library board, and she did vote no on that pay increase. I think she was the only one that did vote no, that was at that, at that meeting. So we were representative as well as we could at that meeting, but that was about it. Anything else? Sure.
The library employees, however, are benefit from all the other city benefits, is that correct? I mean, they're treated the same in other benefits. Sched, vacation schedules, and holidays, and, I presume.
Is this the first time they've ever done that? Yes. I mean, is this the first time that they ever had a different pay increase than the rest of the city employees? Yes. This is the first time. That, that, since I've been involved, and I, it might have happened before that, but I don't think it has, so. All right, there was no action item there, that was just for discussion. Let's move on to new business. Let's move on to new business. We have League of Wisconsin Municipalities Resolution number 1346. Henry?
What page are we on, Mayor?
205.
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, Wapaka, Mayor Smith actually asked, asked that I put together a meeting to host the league, as new executive director Jerry Duchane. The league is being very aggressive in putting together a legislative agenda for this coming legislation, legislative session. About half the council attended that, and then the ones that did not attend, you did get a book in your mail, Partnership for Prosperity. And the whole concept is really built around the fact that all the economic activity in the state's really happening in cities. And the fact that we, in our particular case, has lost over $400,000 in shared revenue since '09, and some other things, have really hampered our ability to, you know, do our work. So, a lot of this is kind of geared towards not forgetting about the cities. I think it's a very positive agenda, it's not trying to pit one group against the other. In fact, it's association of counties, counties association and the towns association have all adopted this, and the three groups are all pushing forward to lobby for this effort. So, Mr. Duchane has just asked communities to adopt this resolution and support, and again, it's just all part of making sure our voice is heard down in Madison, so, I don't know if you have any questions?
We're looking forward to it, actually, I, you know, what's happened, I guess we could take part of the blame for it too, is that there's been a separation between the discussion at the local level and the state level, and that's what we, that's why we're a member of the League of Municipalities, so that we have that voice while we're down there. And that's why I think, and Henry deserves a lot of credit for putting this all together and still, but, yes, I would have liked to seen it better attended by representatives and senators than what we had, but we did have two individuals there, and that was great, you know, and like Duchane, what's his first name?
Jerry.
Jerry said, this is his kickoff for this, and hopefully, as they go around the state, more and more people will start to attend this, and I think, at least I got some value out of that, I don't, and the rest of you that were there?
I thought it was excellent, I thought they had a lot of good information, and I'm really looking forward to the next meeting they have in this area that we're invited to attend.
Yeah, excellent. So again, we want to start working with them, not against them, and that's kind of the concept here that Jerry would like to present to them also. Okay, this is a resolution that we'd like to put on the, on the record, so we would need a motion to approve this resolution.
So move?
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Hackett, that we approve of resolution number 1346, Partnership for Prosperity. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Next, we have a request for fireworks during the Winter Rec Festival. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a memo on page 210 of your packet, basically stating that as a part of our festivities on February 7th, we would like to shoot off fireworks kind of to close the event at about 8:00 PM. That, that event will go from 2:00 to 8:00 PM. Other things involved will be sledding, snowshoe hikes, family activities, concessions, and we would like to close it with, with the fireworks. If we are granted a permit, those fireworks will be paid for either by Beneficial Reuse Management, who has reached out and said that they would like to contribute in some way, and that would be above and beyond the part of the budget that is for the Slut Hill. And then if they, let's say they cover 50%, our Friends at the Parks would cover the rest of that cost. So, as we looked into the ordinance, it does state that, and this is attached to your memo on 211, I believe, and the highlighted section didn't turn out fantastic, but you can see after 9.08 sale, possession, or use of fireworks, it does say, under the first definition there, prohibited, no person shall sell, possess, or use fireworks. If you scroll down to the next page, there are exceptions, and one of those exceptions is stated in 4B. This section does not apply to anyone who has been issued a permit to use or possess fireworks for training purposes only. This should be approved by city council and have a $25 issuance permit. We have, I have talked with Chief Olson about this, fire chief, he said that as long as it's a legitimate training, he would be okay with it, not that we just call it a training, and by doing that, we are having, planning on having Tony and Eric Vergawen be there onsite, those are two local firefighters. That is why we moved it a week later, because I would, I wanted them to be able to be there, they have a fireman's banquet steak fry the weekend before and wouldn't be able to make it. The people that will be training them is a part of Spielbauer Fireworks Company, which is, you can see it attached, is the proposal for the show, as well as a certificate of liability insurance, and, and they do this, they'll go out and do trainings throughout the area. They will be onsite, and, and that's what we're looking at. It'll be about a 10-minute show. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask.
Any comments? Motion?
Well, this isn't a training, this is just, we're just saying it's training, just kind of be around the ordinance, and it's okay to do that?
No, it is a training, so Tony and Eric will be trained by the employees from Spielbauer's fireworks company, which is kind of convenient because Tony, as I understand it, and Andrew talked with Tony and Eric, they are taking over the main fireworks for 4th of July, planning and kind of organizing everything when their dad has done so in the past maximum years, so this will be their first year doing, doing the main fireworks, and this person from Spielbauer will be training.
John Hart, maybe you can just touch on this issue and how we got to where we are as far as for training?
Well, we did the same thing last year, and it appears as if, so that they can have this event, they have coordinated a training session. Looks to me like it's okay.
So you're okay with it, is actually what Jillian's asking, so, okay.
I would think that if we want to do this annually, we ought to consider an amendment to the ordinance, and also include Winter Fest as well as 4th of July. That feature thought, future discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be fine with that, I'd be willing if, if we think it's better to come back and continue to do trainings, I think I'm fine with that. I think when I talked with Jeff, he just wanted to make sure that, however we do it, that people see a group doing it, and it's, it's not easy to just be shooting off fireworks all over town any time of year, was his concern, so, I guess that's a decision for the council, but either way, we can make it work. It is an event that we're planning on having annually. Now whether we'll have money for fireworks every year, I don't know that, but.
Okay. We okay with this?
Is the $2,000 bill, have you discussed this with Beneficial and Friends at the Park, that they know what the price might be there donating?
Yes, I have discussed it with Beneficial Reuse Management. They, Dan Sherman, the project manager, actually said he wanted to buy all the concessions originally. We're working with another nonprofit that's going to take care of all these concessions and use it as their fundraiser, and in turn, I've brought up this idea, said we would love to contribute to that. I told him I'd be coming here tonight to get a permit, I wasn't sure if we could even do it or not, I've sent him the proposal, and he said just let us know after tonight's meeting.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by mail, second by Keeland, that we approve of the request to shoot off fireworks during the Winter Rec Festival on February 7th, 2015. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. I am glad to see that you changed it to February 7th, I know that there was a little kink in the Packer armor, but the Super Bowl is February 1st.
Yeah, we've had discussions about that as well.
All right, let's move on then to letter C. This is a presentation on the Community Development Block Grant Residential Survey to determine percentage of low to moderate income households in the city for purposes of qualifying for the CDBG funds for future city projects. And Nathan leading this, or are you?
It's gonna be a tech team, I'm gonna do a brief introduction, then I'll, I'll give Nathan his limelight in front of the city council this evening. So, within, just, I guess going back, you know, we're going through the vision exercise right now for Main Street, and as we continue into the next phases, you know, the next phase is gonna be pretty much conceptual or preliminary design, and we anticipate, you know, based upon other construction projects in the past, and John's knowledge and my knowledge, we're looking at preliminary design that could be anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 just to get preliminary design. That gets us pretty much a rough cost estimate of what Main Street's gonna really cost to reconstruct. I mean, we're looking, it'll give us different options whether or not, you know, we've talked about, you know, putting in sewer water lines, everything else, it's gonna be expensive regardless. In order, so what we want to do is we want to try to leverage as much grant money as possible that's out there. Within the 2015 budget, the city council approved $50,000 towards this effort for next year, which gets us definitely a great start, and we want to hopefully utilize some of the monies that are in that to match a grant for community development block grant monies. Right now, the city's not an entitlement community, and as we've gone through this process, and I'll give Nathan the time, since he's been the one that's really been working on it the most, but in the end, if we go through this process and identify, right now the, the state is utilizing our 2010 census numbers, which our LMI is 51.5. It's now 2014, and they have advised us to go through this process to see whether or not we can actually qualify. In order to qualify for grant monies, we need to be at 49, I believe.
Oh, you had that backwards.
Sorry.
We're at 49.
We're at, we're at, we need, we're at 49, we need to be at 51.5%. Thank you, Henry. At the end of the day, this has potential benefit not only for Main Street, but also future construction projects, i.e. Public Works Building or other road projects as well, if we actually qualify for these monies. So I'm gonna turn it over to Nathan, kind of just give a brief summary of the process that he has gone through and what the next steps are.
All right, appears to be working, good. All right, hello, my name is Nathan Woods, I've been an intern with the Community Development Department here for a few months now, and I've been working with, lion's share of my time to further this community development block grant. Thank you for the great introduction to the program, and I have one minor update to the numbers. Yeah, as of our 2010, we are at 49.5% LMI, and we need to be at 51. Because this grant is doned out, depending on how many citizens or what the percentage of, for the affected area for these improvements, it needs to be at least 51% of the population at low to moderate income. The Housing and Urban Development for the state has those numbers, so it's in conjunction with the census and the HUD. So, right now, since we are about a percent and a half short of qualifying for this grant, and this grant has the capacity to be hundreds of thousands of dollars coming into the town for development projects, improvements, infrastructure, all to facilitate visioning, and even in the market studies and planning of these major improvements, we're prepared to work with the Department of Administration, we're following their guidelines, and we'd like to send out a survey, a moderate or low to moderate income survey, which, when we get the results back, it'll be going out to about 20%, randomized of all the households in the city, because it'll be the full city receiving the benefits. We want to send out this survey, randomized to 20% of the households, when we get it back, we'll be able to verify if we're still at the 49.5% or if we've met the 51% threshold to make us eligible for this grant. So, we're prepared for it, we're gonna send out a mailer if, if approved, and it's a total of about $320 max for this mailer, and it's gonna be absorbed by our department's budget. So, Brendan, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Two things, I mean, the reason why, we're, when we, when Nathan and Henry and I first started looking at this, and as the committee has probably seen in some of the documents and minutes for the Vision Committee, we have a rough visioning area, pretty much, that we've identified through the process, and it's about a 15-minute walk based for downtown. When we went to the state first to identify whether or not we could use that as our target area, they said no, because they said at the end of the day, the improvements that we're looking at for reconstruction of Main Street benefit the entire community, so that is why we have to do a community-wide survey, very similar to the census or the American survey that's sent out, we pretty much have to try to target as many people as possible. So this, the state's requiring us to do about 20%, we are looking at possibly trying to incentivize this, because we need about 90% or so back of the 400 and, say, 12 or 15 that we need to send out, so we are looking to possibly incentivize some of this as well. The reason why we're also here this evening is, one, to be very transparent to the public and introduce this project to the city council, two, to get your blessing, and we're gonna try to do some more public outreach before this actually gets sent out, because if we don't get enough surveys back on the first try, we will probably have to go door-to-door on the second round to get the needed information that, and the numbers before we can actually submit this to the state for consideration for that project, and that is why we're here this evening. John has done a similar process, or project in the past, but he was able to do this on a very smaller area than what we have to do for the citywide, so, this is not new to the city, we've done similar process in the past.
I'll, I'll add just a little bit more. So I've been working with the Department of Administration, we've got to know them very well. We're actually one of the first communities to, to challenge our numbers because we're so close, you know, a percent and a half off. I have the survey all prepared, it's not asking for names, we're following the Department of Administration's guidelines very specifically, in fact, they're having meetings about our planning. So, we, we're in compliance with all of the state regulations, we're just, yeah, we are seeking your blessing, and of course, I believe the mayor and the city council members all received a memorandum that summarizes this, did everybody receive that?
And the sample surveys in your packet as well.
I have a question. Do you need, Nathan, do you need to have either, is it a certain percentage of the ones you send out, or a raw, specific number that come back?
We're doing it on the number of households for the whole city. The number of households, based on our census data, is 2,700, but it's an approximate number. So we have a listing of all of the, the addresses and households in the city, and based on our numbers, the DOA has said, okay, you need to have about 20% of that, which is within a range of about 320 to, the maximum is 403, that we can send out and get back. So we have to have about 90% return on the, on the 400 that we sent out.
And you can't send out more to get more completed back?
I'll be, it looks like right now, no, we have to, that's why we wanted to get the word out right now, and we'll be doing more, and incentivizing it to get that out. Right now, it's, it's very tight, it's only about 20% more than our minimum that has to come back that we can send out.
This is definitely a random sampling, I mean, Nathan has definitely even gone through all the listings and identified pretty much every six person we need to send this out to, roughly, I think is the number that we're, that we're looking at, or that we needed to, that's a rough estimate. And, you know, this also includes a- we needed to. That's a rough estimate. Um, and, you know, this also includes apartment buildings. We've had to take some time and actually identify the apartment buildings. This also includes, uh, retirement homes and senior centers. We've also had to get that information to count that into the 2,700 households we have within the city. Again, definitely some lengthy efforts, and, uh, I think from Henry and I both, this has definitely been very appreciative for Nathan taking on this project, but the benefits long-term could be definitely be, um, a positive for the city.
I have a question. Is, is this block grant similar to or the same, or is it different than the one that the city currently has for low-income people that the, um, cap services kinda runs? It is, um, it is the same, but some money they allocate for housing, Dave, and some are for like, public projects, infrastructure. And when we got that housing grant, we got two of those grants, beginning, I, this is just rough, 2002 and then maybe 2005. Uh, based on the old census, we were at 51%. So, we, right out of the box, met the target. So, all we had to do is put in an application, and actually, they had more applications, and they kinda picked from the hat at one, that, that last time. So, I guess we're so close that they encouraged us, because census data isn't 100% precise, to go ahead, go through this process. And it's, it's gonna be painful a little bit, it's gonna take some energy and focus, but that one and a half percent's close enough to make it worth our while. And I think our idea today was just to make sure everybody knows about it, because you may get a call from a resident, particularly if we end up going door-to-door. And I think we can easily report to council if we need to do that, so you know it's coming. The case, and probably the police department, we should let you guys know when we do that as well, if we have to. Let's hope we don't. But this would be another entirely different block of money. Yes. There's not much left in the other one, right? Yeah, and I'm, yeah, and I went to a training back in May, and they don't give out a lot of the planning money, and I think that's what we're hoping to get if we qualify this time. I think if we meet the 51%, we stand a very, very good chance. Is it up to a 25?
Correct, up to $25,000.
So, just to elaborate a little bit, um, yeah, there's many components to this Community Development Block Grant. Uh, that planning grant is, yes, up to $25,000, and that's the smallest portion of this. Um, there's development funds that we would also be eligible for, for application if we meet these numbers. Um, and that's a 50% match, up to $500,000. Um, that also works towards establishing revolving loan funds for low-to-moderate income housing. Um, and there's many details, and there's too many to get into right now. But, uh, that first segment is what we're looking for immediately, because that's what we have allotted for in the budget. Um, and if we're, of course, eligible, then we're eligible to apply for the much larger blocks that have the same criteria.
Um, if you would have to go, um, door-to-door, do you have a plan? Is it the same people you're sending the surveys to? It is, okay.
Yes, we've had to very painstakingly list out every address and possible household in the city. Uh, and that gets into getting into the post office databases and figuring out exactly the numbering of each apartment, uh, within these buildings, and of course, uh, residential homes and, uh, the elderly care facilities. So, they said earlier on, we could either choose to do a random number generator, or we could follow another form, which was to select every sixth one of these residences. And that's, that's fine. That's all set, so we have them listed. Um, I'm numbering them and selecting them right now, according to that random template, and we'll know exactly the ones that we get back and which we won't.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mayor. Um, I, I know the utilities might be, uh, fundable through this in a separate pot of money. We use that, I believe, to extend the line out on Royalton, CDBG money. Um, I'm wondering, I, I don't know the answer to this, but, um, if we do qualify with the DOA, there may be other programs that we might be able to get into that, because we've qualified with them, trigger other, other agencies or other grant monies.
Uh, again, uh, the, the primary focus was Main Street planning grant, phase one, that's why we're doing this. Phase two would be the construction of Main, reconstruction of Main Street would be another pot of money that we'd be looking at, which, which qualifies for that. Um, and also, this does qualify for you, John, for your potential building in the future, for public works. There is a portion of grant monies that could qualify for public infrastructure improvements, which include, again, sewer water, stormwater, or physical building improvements. It also does target, um, reconstruction of other roads within the city. So, there, there, again, the benefits long-term by going through this, uh, this process is definitely a positive for the city if we do qualify.
What I mean is, there's other agencies might accept this qualification as the basis to get their grant monies.
Correct. We can, uh, there are potential opportunities if we were to apply for other grants. Yeah, um, I, I'll use the example, like, if we were applying for a stewardship grant, we can actually, some of the monies that we leverage from Community Development Block Grant could also be leveraged towards a DNR grant or something along those lines. Correct.
So, they can work to meet the matching components, um, up to a certain percentage for other grants. Uh, also, the, uh, the numbers that we would get from this low-to-moderate income survey would be valid for several years, and, uh, according to the Department of Administration. So, we could use the data that we get, even if we don't qualify, uh, for several more years for other applications.
Okay. So, what we'd be doing tonight is approving, uh, us moving forward with this survey. If we're okay with it? Yeah, I do.
Sorry. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by mail, second by, uh, Olson, that we approve staff moving forward with this CDBG residential survey. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Thanks, Nathan. Okay, next we have, uh, license report number 1256. This is a, uh, taxicab driver's license. See those on, uh, page 220.
I had a question on this. The driver's licenses are separate from the operator's licenses. Are we voting on both of them at the same time?
They're on the same report.
Yeah, but the agenda said just the driver's licenses.
Yeah, they should've said both. The vehicles are ours, um, listed on here. Well, actually, no, we're, um, now I'm thinking, these are the vehicles that the people you are approving for licenses will be operating. These are city-owned vehicles.
So, vehicles, vehicles do not have to have their own separate license if they're used for taxicab purposes?
Well, we, we have them licensed, you know, through the state of Wisconsin.
Just like, just like any other vehicle?
We own them, and that's part of our contract with Brown. We lease them to Brown for, I guess, a buck.
So, we only need to approve the taxicab driver's licenses?
I move to approve taxicab driver's licenses.
1256.
Yeah, no, 1256.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Keela, and second by Hackett, that we approve of license report number, uh, 12?
56.
56, thank you. Uh, taxicab driver's license. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We have, uh, what next? Uh, I'm confused.
Dance hall permits.
1257.
Uh, we have license report number 1257. This is a dance hall permit. This is a-
Motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh, motion by Hagan, second by Fenske, that we approve of the dance hall permits. Uh, these are annual permits from January 1st through December 31st. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Alright, uh, I think Communications, Recommendations of-
License.
What are we doing now?
1258.
License, alright, license report number 1258.
Take a motion we approve.
Second.
So, I have to be careful, 'cause we just talked about taxicab operator's license, and now we're talking about operator's license. Now, can you see why I was confused? Alright, thank you.
That's why I was asking the question.
Alright, so, we have, uh, uh, one person on the operator, bartender's operator's license. Did we get a motion?
Yes.
Second? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Alright, Communications, Recommendations of the Mayor, just, uh, a couple of things. I think you've probably seen that we have, uh, two people in the Public Works Department that are retiring this year, possibly a third individual, if I'm right, John, but two-
And we have two, we have two letters submitted for the end of January, so we are advertising the skilled crewman position right now. Um, if anybody, you know anybody that's interested, have them fill out an employee application form. That's critical. We, we will accept resumes, but they also must fill out the application form. Um, and encourage anyone, if they're interested, um, you know, we will answer questions, and my name's on the application as well, but I encourage you to, you know, make, fill those forms out. We will be accepting them until January 7th, um, and then we will hopefully be working towards filling those positions by the end of the month. Um, we've advertised, we'll be in the local paper, uh, Job Center, um, website, all that. We have a fillable application form on the city website. If you go to the city website, it's fillable in, then you have to print that application off and either hand-deliver or PDF or something, fax, just get it to us at that point. So, it's a fillable form. You can also just print off the form and also hand, hand-write the form out as well, so. Um, any questions? Direct them to me, and, um, hopefully we'll be getting some good applicants in. Uh, these are, uh, street department employees, skilled crewmen, so they're involved with snow removal, and, um, we are gonna make every effort to be seamless on our snow removal this year. If there is something that we see that we're concerned with, I will keep the council informed. We have to do some contractual work to assist us, and that's available, we will do that as well.
Okay. Thanks, John, and, and it's good that we were able to get that out, uh, get as good as applicants as we possibly can. I do want to remind the council, though, that we do not budget for, uh, payouts at the end of retirement, so we have two individuals, or we might have a third one. We don't want to go without, uh, snowplow drivers. What we've done in some positions is wait to hire a new individual until those, uh, sick time has been paid out. Um, but we're not gonna be able to do that in this situation, uh, unless you want, you want to volunteer that your road is not plowed until we hire someone. But, again, I, I think it's important that you understand, we're gonna take a hit on our budget right away because of those items. And I think Steve's, Steve has talked about it, it's probably one of his pet peeves, but, uh, we did not budget for that. And that's something that we probably do need to discuss, uh, in the future, too, how we're gonna handle these.
Do they get sick pay and all that for the whole year, or do you earn it as you go?
They earn it as they go, and they, they either use, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, if it's at the end of January, you know how much that goes out to that they've earned, right?
Yeah, inner employee handbook, it's kinda all described, but it's, uh, you earn sick time, it is accrued. There is a maximum, um, amount that you can earn, and after that, the city, uh, if you don't use it beyond the max, the city pays that out at the end of the year, at $50 a day, I believe, is the amount. Um, so, this is accrued sick time, and depending on the longevity of how long you're with the city, there's a percentage of your sick time that's paid out at time of separation. So, a new employee might get 25% of any of their accrued sick time, or a longer-term employee would get 100%.
And both of these people are long-term individuals, so they'll receive 100%.
And it's, it's accrued year-to-year. This is not a payout every year. This could be 20 years' worth of sick time?
Well, it's, there's a maximum. Henry, do you know the, what the max is?
Yeah, it's capped at, uh, it's 1,200 hours. I'm sorry, I need the handbook. You were on the committee, remember, yeah?
And I've mentioned what Steve has mentioned before, because this is, well, it's gonna continue to hit us. We probably should put it on a, uh, in a cult just for that.
They can also, uh, take that payout as payment towards their health insurance that they continue on with, not the city's. They cannot take health, city health insurance. So, that account can pay for that health insurance premium until it's paid out, which could be several years.
It's a little better on our budget, but either way, you're paying the extra dollars, so.
Okay. I, I'm assuming they must accrue some vacation time, too, since they're going into 2015, too.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we'll have to be paying that out, too.
They'll get, they'll get vacation time that, um, they'll take, or take it at time of retirement, yes.
I have a question. This might be a dumb question, but when they start accruing, is it accruing at the, the pay at that time? And do we keep track of that? Or are they accruing, say, just really?
Is it all paid as their highest wage right now?
It's paid at their current rate.
Oh, my gosh.
It's hours, it's not pay. Hours.
But it's, you know, they could've started at $15 an hour, but now, when they retire, they're at 23, and it's paid at 23, and not stepped up, right?
Well, yes. The, well, the plus side of this, well, there is no plus side here, if you want to talk about that, but new employees have a new policy. I mean, they're not controlled by the union anymore, so we did not negotiate, but we put into effect with the employees. The employees sat on that same committee. Uh, new employees then will not get 100% of their, their sick hours. Um, and I think it's less, too, isn't it, Andrew? If I remember right.
It was, uh, 900 hours?
600, 900?
900?
Yeah. Okay. So, again, this is emergency-type things. There is no way that we can eat this up within the budget. Hopefully, John can find something as we go through the year's budget, but we can anticipate that, that happening. Okay? Uh, I think that's it. The only other thing I have is, uh, we probably won't be meeting again before Christmas, so Merry Christmas to all of you, Happy New Year. Have a great time. I'm gonna head to Tampa Bay, so.
Move to adjourn?
We need a motion to adjourn.
It's not gonna rub it in.
Motion by Keela, and second by Hagan, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is January 6th, 2015. Subject to call. You know, we could just sit 30 more seconds. I feel like a teacher here. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Have a great night.